Testing.
Good evening, John. We can hear you.
Yeah. Hopefully we can zip through this.
Yep, we'll, we'll see. Just a reminder, when you do enter the conference call, the lines are automatically muted. If you're not a member of the council or staff, please remember to keep it muted. We've got about another minute or so, and there's still guests entering. While it says 7:30 on my computer clock, I'm going to give it another minute just to make sure that all members of the council and staff are here. Well, it looks like we have everyone that we need for now, and as others come in, I will go ahead and admit them through the waiting room. So I'd like to say good evening to everybody and welcome to tonight's January 19th Committee of the Whole. We do have six items on the agenda. However, before we dive into those, I do want to just go over a couple more housekeeping items and ground rules that we go over each time we have these meetings, specifically that those who are joining via Zoom or in the city council chambers this evening, you will be afforded the opportunity for public comment. Members of the public present in the city council chambers listening to the meeting will be afforded the opportunity to provide their public comments in accordance with procedures that are applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting, which primarily means that members of the public must have signed in prior to the start of the evening. And then public comment will be afforded to those who are on this evening's Zoom conference line, so long as you provided your contact information and credentials prior to the cutoff line, our time on the agenda, as noted in tonight's agenda. And as always, any written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will be read after the topic has been discussed by the city council. In addition to that, those who are willing or wanting to speak, we ask that the people who do so keep their comments to five minutes at length to be cognizant of everyone's time. And those comments that they provide must be addressed to the council as a whole, and they must be specifically about this evening's agenda items. So with that, why don't we go ahead and jump right into the first item, which is water main ownership? And for that, Director Horn, when you're ready, I can hand the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm ready. I'm ready to take control of the screen if you can share that.
Yep, opening that up now.
I'm not very skilled, so you might need to be, correct me a little bit.
Okay, so if you, if you're on a conventional keyboard and you have a mouse, go ahead and jiggle the mouse for the menu. You should see the menu pop up where you have a microphone, a camera, screen share.
Yeah, oh, it says share screen, yeah.
Yep, go ahead and just hit share screen.
Okay, there we go.
And then it'll ask for the opportunity to share, and in a moment, it should start the conversion, so. We'll just wait for it here. How many monitors do you have?
I have three, I'd like to share screen two if I can.
Yep, so go ahead and selected the monitor. You should see a window that pops up and it'll say monitor one, two, or three. Select the one you want and then hit share at the bottom in the lower right of that tile.
Yeah, it's not giving, I have done that before. It's not giving me that option for some reason.
So, okay, so when you select the share screen option, you do see the screens?
I got it, Mayor, I got it.
Good, nice.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. We can see it perfectly, too.
You can see, great. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be looking to the side at the screen while I give this presentation. Mayor, if people are raising their hands, if you don't mind just interrupting me, this is a very important issue to our department. As a matter of fact, I have several staff members on the line who are very interested in this conversation and are willing to answer any operational questions you might have should they arise.
Okay, so Director Horn, just to be clear, you do wish to be interrupted during the presentation and not just hold the questions until after?
I would prefer the questions be held till the end, but I understand if a topic comes up that requires an interjection, if you just holler, I'll stop. That's fine with me.
Then council, if you could raise your hand if a question comes up that has an immediate need to be addressed. Otherwise, if you can make a note and then circle back, I think that'll help with expedience and efficiency for tonight's meeting.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Sure, go ahead.
As I, as I said before, this is a presentation on, really to educate the council on some of the struggles we're going through in determining the difference between public water mains and private water services, or what are sometimes referred to as private water mains. Variety of issues have caused, have resulted in us bringing this to the council today. But as you are aware from previous council meetings, it has been on the agenda for quite a long time. It's just taken us a while to put together the information needed to share. So, as you can see, I just provided a snapshot from our GIS system. This is the kind of stuff we look at every day. This is a map of just an area of the community to show all the different water pipes that exist underground. Many of the pipes you are looking at right now are what we would consider public water mains, but not all of them are. And the only way to determine that is to really dive deep into their location. You cannot just look at a water pipe and know whether it's a public water main or not. While all of the pictures there look like they would be to a public system, they very likely could just as easily be pipes serving a private water service or a private commercial complex. The best way we've, what we use to distinguish between a water service and a water main is the I E P A, the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. They provide guidance regarding water mains, and the critical statement in this description is underlined. It states that a water line must only be connected to one property dwelling or rental unit. So really, what, what that's trying to do is develop a criteria by which you can determine whether a water pipe is either a private water service or a public water main by its location on a property. As I said before, water services can be any size from the one-inch copper line that likely serves your homes to anywhere up to a 12-inch ductile iron water pipe that is consistent with the size water main that, that goes east and west across our entire community. What I tried to do is, I'm, I'm going to do my best to provide short, quick examples of what, what water mains and water services look like in the field and some of the hurdles we experience every day. Just to give you an understanding of what we talk about when we say water main versus water service. Mayor, can you see my cursor as I move it? You guys can see it? Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try and use it. For some reason, it disappears occasionally, but I'll do my best to keep it. So this pipe that runs along when that gets circled, while the green line's not perfectly accurate, this is considered a water main, public water main because it's on, within the right-of-way on public property. This line that goes from the public water main to this building is considered a private water service. Notice it's only about probably 60 or 70 feet long. This pipe that connects to the water main and goes all the way around this building is also considered a private water service. That pipe is owned by that property owner and is not repaired by the city of Rolling Meadows. These are, these are, those determinations are made based on their location in the map and on the property. Some examples, just quickly to show you that, that are buildings that you're aware of. These are both on Central Road. There's a Central Road School, which again has a single service that serves the building. These services are sized and located to comply with building code regulations such as occupant load and what type of material is going to be stored in the building, what the building's constructed out of, and, and what kind of fire protection requirements are necessary for that building. And you'll notice to the picture on the right is the Rolling Meadows High School. All this pipe that I'm running my cursor along, all the way to this point, all the way around the building, this is all owned and maintained by the Rolling Meadows High School. It is not city-owned piping. The idea is that we can shut this valve off and shut this valve off and isolate that single property and not affect other property owners. That's what makes it a service, not a, not a public water main. The last example I want to give you comes with the three questions we ask as a staff. We ask, is the water line within a city-owned property or right-of-way? If the answer is yes, then we know it's ours to maintain. If the answer is no, we go on to the next question, which is, if I turn off the water, will it affect any other property? Again, if the answer is yes, it's likely a public water main. If not, it's probably a water service. And lastly, is there a legal agreement on file with the city requiring that the city maintain the water system? Again, if the answer is yes, then we know it's ours to maintain. If not, then we know it's not. The reason I showed you this area, this is actually a very well-designed area of the community. This, these eight different tenants, two different buildings, eight different tenants, have a water pipe that runs along the back of their property, which is not in the right-of-way. It can be shut off here and here and not affect any other property. Again, we're talking about property and not building. And I can tell you that we have no legal agreement showing that we are responsible for repairing or replacing that pipe. The reason that's critical is I can tell you that our past practice, historically, our crews have repaired that pipe. And that is a misunderstanding of the I E P A guidance and what it's intended for. So that's one of the primary reasons we're bringing this to the city council is we want to educate the council. So when we start changing our policy and our practices to be more in line with I E P A regulations, be more in line with legal documentation requires of us, that when you hear from a business owner, we're not expecting you to answer the question for him, but at least understand where we're coming from and why we cannot just accept ownership of every piece of pipe in the community. This is really the, the driving force to this whole discussion. There's a condominium complex off of Algonquin Road that we have had, I think Kevin's on the line, I think, seven or eight water main breaks in the last six months. Every piece of information that I've been able to look up in our records, the way the pipe is laid out should be a private water service. We should not be repairing any of these breaks. But again, some misguided decision-making years ago in an effort to help development at the time has resulted in long-term confusion and, and discrepancies as to whether the, the water pipe is public or private. And I'll just show you, I'm gonna, my next slide kind of zooms out of this area. And you'll notice there's five red circles. Those are all connections that we would not currently permit. And the reason is, we have them leaving, crossing property line to property line. So that turns that pipe into a public line, not a private line. And it's really unnecessary because there's a supply to the north on Algonquin Road, and there's a supply to the south on Louise Drive. So all these connections that are made from development to development are unnecessary and really just cause confusion. This up here, for some reason, we allowed this business to connect their fire system from this property here. And the reason that this is a bad idea, I'll just use that as an example. My cursor disappeared. Let's say this fire, this valve is to turn off this fire supply. Well, let's say there was a problem with the valve, okay? And the business owner needed our help turning off the water pipe to fix their valve. They would have to go on to this property to turn this pipe off. And this property to turn this pipe off. Well, if either one of these valves were to break or get damaged, who do I have fix that pipe? The guy who turned it off or the guy where the property, the property where the valve exists? So that's the kind of problems that happen when you install water piping in a way that the city doesn't have specific control over it. So, and this scenario, I'm going to show you a few other examples, but exists in many locations throughout the city. So, one of the reasons I think we got into this situation is, I think there was a misconception in the past that an easement on its own declares ownership. And after very long conversations with our city attorney to clarify this information, an easement on its own does not declare ownership, okay? We require easements over all the pipe in the community because we may have to access it for some reason. For example, we flush hydrants. We run fire flows for fire protection people. If a business owner is non-responsive to a water main break, we have to protect the public water supply. So we might go in and fix the water pipe, but then we're going to invoice the property owner as a result. So my, my guess is that what we did is we required easements of certain things, but we didn't take ownership of some of these utilities that exist on private property, which has a huge impact on what our true assets are and what we're responsible for future investment as far as water main replacement, things like that. So, there is a proper way to accept utilities. And the way that we are going to propose doing it moving forward is very typical of most communities is for new development, when public utilities are going to be installed, we require that development enter into what's called an improvement agreement. That improvement agreement very clearly stipulates what's going to be installed, what's going to be constructed as part of the project, and who's going to own it when it is completed. At the end of the project, typically either a city planner or city engineer would get a letter of request by the developer to have their utility accepted, publicly accepted. That person would require a bill of sale be completed, which is the examples on the right, that would delineate specifically what, what is being sold to the city for a nominal dollar amount. I think the example shows $10. It's usually 100. But again, it's a nominal amount to accept ownership. During that review, the city engineer would usually review the lien waivers to make sure there's no liens held against that utility. So when we took public ownership of it, either an ordinance or resolution would be passed, providing every future staff member with the tools they need to determine whether this is a public or private system. And this is where I, where I believe that good intentions went wrong in the past. This was a development to the south along Algonquin Road called Crossroads Corporate Center. There are multiple buildings on multiple different properties. Usually when you have something like this, what gets developed is a, what gets initiated is a corporate condominium or something like that, where all the business owners or all the property owners share in the expense of a water main break or a sanitary backup or anything like that. I don't know when, but it appears that sometime we made a connection from this property to this property. And as a result, we turned this private line basically into a public water main. And the problem with that is, again, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different properties that crosses, those lines cross. And if this, this business owner were to have a water main break here on his property and have to turn off a valve on this person's property and break it, who's responsible for the repair? And we run into those scenarios. I don't want to say weekly, but we, we do many of these a year where we, we, we spend hours and hours and hours of staff time just determining who's responsible, let alone who has to make the repair. The last real example I want to show you is the Continental Towers in Meyer Drive. I know that Meyer Food was constructed years ago as part of a big development that occurred within the city. And I, and what I think through talking historically with some of our more long-tenured staff is the pipe that extends along the front of this building used to go to here and just meander across Gulf Road as it does right now. I believe that in an effort to help Meyer Drive or Meyer Food shorten the required pipe that they would have to install, they connected it across property lines. What that basically did is turn this line into a private water main. So one of the other things that we're going to initiate are these kind of small repairs into our capital improvement plan. I'll discuss that a little later, but what we're going to do is we're going to identify these areas where we can fix them through capital improvements. And I think I provided a solution, so kind of rudimentary, but it gives you the, the gist of what, what we would propose is we would remove these pieces of pipe that kind of are squiggly lined, provided it didn't affect anyone's water service or fire protection, and we would install the red lines would be water mains. These lines here would all be public water mains. This line would be a private water main. And the reason this is, is important to establish kind of now in the department is historically, I went back a slide, historically, our water, our underground utility division would have been asked to fix a pipe in the back of Meyer Foods, and that is just not the responsibility of the municipality. That is the responsibility of a business owner, and they know that that's their responsibility. So, a lot of the situations we ran into are the result of past practice and, and maybe misguided decision-making in the past. It was also maybe decisions that were short-term or short-sighted and not looking at long-term concerns, which is why I provided this example. The building on the right is school health, which many of you know was constructed in the last four years or five years, I think. As some of you know, we were constructing Squibb Avenue when this building was under construction, and they wanted to install this water main underneath this parking lot, underneath this row of cars. And what that did is it put a potential opportunity for public water main on private property. So if you can imagine this blue line that goes right down the center of an easement that is now this area is owned by the city, if this line were over here and this building wanted to connect to that line, he would have to go through someone's private property to access it. And we don't want those scenarios. At the same time, that, that building on the left was subdividing their lot, and we didn't know if they were going to be constructing a new building there. So we certainly didn't want them to cross a brand-new road, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to connect to a pipe, which is why we put it in the center of the lot, not on private property. And we, again, we didn't have the process in place to publicly accept it, but we took every measure we knew how. We had the record drawings done, and, and it indicates right on the record drawing that the easement and the water main are hereby dedicated to the city. So at least we have something to hang our hat on for future generations of employees. The last two examples are just to show you that there are some developments that, you know, may never be able to be fixed. They may have to be just, we may have to just enter into, get an agreement or something that the property owners understand where their responsibilities lie. the property owners understand where their responsibilities lie. This complex, the Gallagher complex, that includes three different property owners, actually four, this is a different property owner. There are multiple different properties. Well, there was a time when all this was owned by one company. And the lots changed hands and, and different ownerships, so this, all this main in here, we don't know who's responsible for it, so I, I make that little break there. If the water main were to break there, our guys do not know who to call. So, and that's a problem, so. So that's something we're going to work towards solving. And again, the last example is, is our biggest albatross in the city, which is the Walmart development. I, I don't know how we'll ever fix that, but it'll probably be done through agreements where we actually use exhibits and hopefully identify those things some way to help provide clarity, but I can tell you that our staff very regularly fixes pipes in a private parking lot. And that's just not supposed to happen. So, as I said, I wanted to present you with the situations we run into, but at the same time assure you that we're on the right track to be more in align with the I E P A guidance, the A W W A guidance, and to start establishing development standards and, and processes and protocols that will allow us to start accepting water mains, sanitary sewer, roadways, whatever they might be in a more formal fashion, so the community knows what their assets are definitively moving forward. So, just real briefly, we're gonna, our first step is going to be to develop code language with the city attorney. Hopefully bring that to council in the next several weeks, primarily to give our staff something to hang their hat on when they're talking to business owners. We're also going to develop a department policy where we're going to establish consistent guidelines that all future staff members will be able to point to and understand how to make these decisions. We're going to update our city records primarily, this refers to our G I S system. When the G I S data was initially impl- or incorporated into the system, it just defaulted every single thing to City of Rolling Meadows' ownership. So we're actually working on that right now to change some of that data. Lastly, I want to, or sec-, the next step is I want to assure the council that we will never make a change to the city infrastructure without first running it through a water, water modeling exercise to make sure that we are not reducing fire protection at all in any area. We understand that fire protection is the number-one priority, and we are not interested in reducing the level of service and fire protection simply to declare ownership at this point. And then lastly, lastly, as part of our development guidelines, we're going to establish clear protocols and procedures for bringing a utility through the public acceptance process, bringing it before the city council so you can publicly accept it under resolution or ordinance. And then, and that provide that kind of concrete documentation that shows that in fact the city does or does not own a particular infrastructure component, so. I tried to get through that as quickly as I could, but again, as I indicated, this is a very important thing to the Public Works Department, particularly the Utilities Division. You know, I talked fast, but if I let Kevin on right now, I don't think you guys will be able to keep up because this is very important to him and his crews because they're the guys out there at, at, I, I can tell you, they were out at about 1:00 in the morning on Christmas Eve last year at one of those locations fixing a water main break that was about 10 feet deep, three feet from a building. And that's just not, we should just not be doing that. So, thank you, Mayor, and if it's okay, I'll stop the sharing now. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely, just hit stop, share. Thank you for sharing that. Before I ask, I have a couple minor questions, but before I do that, I'd like to find out from the council by show of hand if there's any questions for, for Director Horn here. All right, I see Alderman Budmats and then Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Horn, it seems that, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the, one of the culprits in this is that the subdivision of property, when a lot is divided into several pieces, and, and that, at, at that point, it seems like that the, the, maybe the water supply is an afterthought and, and that's how some of like, the one where you had the five circles, perhaps that complex was all one owner and then was split into two owners or, or some kind of a thing where the subdivision or the condominium association split into two separate. Is there a way, and perhaps our, our attorney can help us with this, before we approve subdivisions, that we can make sure that the water, water is accounted for in that, the water mains are accounted for before we approve a subdivision in the future?
I'll defer to the city attorney first, but I can answer that, answer a component of that.
Yes, the answer is yes. The city council can, you know, adopt the appropriate regulations so that the, the situation that has occurred before doesn't have to occur again and can require that city approval of, of that, you know, service line, which is what it's supposed to be, you know, is approved by the city ahead of time and prior to, you know, subdividing, correct?
Thank you, Alderman.
Or development, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman Budmats. We would also, I would just let you know that, that is one of the things that we have talked about internally in community development that we are going to either require or strongly encourage lot consolidation on future developments. And to your point, if there has to remain subdivided lots, then we will require the condominium language be established. And again, part of an improvement agreement or something to that effect that our staffs can always refer back to, you know, for, for the next 50 years. We, we will not let that occur in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and Director Horn's comments and his answer back to Alderman Budmats, he took care of my question too, so I'm all set.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions from the council? I don't see any other hands up. So Director Horn, quick question, when it comes to the city ending up fixing a water main that, that clearly belongs to a private property, do we ever turn around and invoice or try and direct that private property to another entity for resolution of the broken main? Or do we just go out there and acquiesce and make the repair?
I, I can tell you, Mayor, starting tomorrow morning, we will be invoicing anyone that that happens to. It is my understanding that, and, and again, I don't know what changed when historically here. I, I've heard that a long time ago, we didn't do this, and then at some point we changed, so. I, I will tell you that we have not, at least in my time here, invoiced anyone for a water main repair to that, to that degree. But I will tell you that that would be our process moving forward. We would meet with an owner if we felt it was theirs to fix, but they wanted to argue that point. Obviously, we have a responsibility to the public water supply. So, if we couldn't make a determination at that moment, we would fix it with the property owner, understanding that any and all repairs expenses would be incurred by them if it was proven that, or, or not disproven that it was theirs to, to complete. Because again, all we can do is review the files we have on, on hand. If nothing we have specifically states that it's ours, we have to assume it's not.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, kind of piggybacking off that for the assumption of who owns what, I know that there's development now of a series of standards that can make it more clear or black and white to ownership. And I know that you go through those three questions, which you mentioned at the beginning of the presentation to, to make the determination. But are there any other physical markers? I know you said not on the pipe specifically, but if, if a main is set in within the property lines by so much, then it can be determined that is owned privately versus a, you know, city-owned? Or is there nothing like that that you could, you could draw back to for an observer to look at?
Yeah, you know, we have, that's a great question, Mayor. We've actually had conversations internally about painting hydrants because every water line has, every 400 feet has a hydrant. Doesn't matter even if it's a dead-end line, the dead-end has a hydrant, so we could flush the line out. So we've discussed the potential of painting the caps of the hydrant a different color to delineate whether there, it's a private or public line. But again, you know, we've really been scrambling over this last year trying to get this presentation before you, you all, and, you know, right now, we just want to get some concurrence that we're on the right track and that, and that if you guys get contacted by business owners concerned about this in the future, that you at least have some understanding of what we're up against and, and we're trying to make smart decisions. We're not here to make life difficult on any business owner, but we really have to get out of the business of fixing people's private water pipes because the reality is all the residents are paying for that, you know, when we spend that money.
Yeah, no, I, I, I can see where you're coming from with the, the position on what the effort is behind this. One last question, and this is kind of superficial, but you mentioned that if there is a, a break in the main, but the, whether it's the city or a private entity going to do the repair has to go to property B's valve to shut it off and they break it, is, is it common to have those valves broken, or is it always something different that breaks when those scenarios occur?
Yeah, it's hard to tell, Mayor, because, you know, we, we always try to be the ones turning the valve. And, and I can tell you that the simple practice of turning a valve off too quickly can actually cause multiple water main breaks elsewhere in the system. It's called water hammering. Some of these water mains, as, as you all know from previous Capitol discussions, were installed in the 50s. And they're only designed, a lot of them, to last 50 years. So, we're beyond some of their useful, their expected life. So, it doesn't take a lot to damage a valve. Some of those operating nuts rot away because they're underwater, and you go to turn them off and they just pop right off. And then they start leaking, so. Again, a, a simple repair can turn into a catastrophe pretty darn quick, so.
Okay, thank you. I do see there's a couple other hands here, starting with Alderman Sanoyka.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Director Horn, you had stated to the mayor that you intend to start invoicing businesses as early as tomorrow if we, it's required. And I just wanted to make sure that, while I appreciate you coming to the council today to explain this problem and this longstanding practice that we are now changing so that we're on the same page. Is, is there any collaboration with our business advocate to make sure that businesses aren't surprised by this change in expectation or change in practice?
I, I can't say that we've had any conversations. And, and again, my expectation, you know, as I think the memo said, we do six to eight, I think it said, a year. And we do 40 to 60 breaks a year. So, my expectation is not that we're dealing with a high percentage of businesses, so I would hate to distribute a mass message that isn't going to affect 90% of them. I think we're going to take it case by case. Again, as I said, our staff is on the line and they can reiterate. I mean, we, we hand-hold through these emergencies as much as humanly possible. We don't, we are, I sounded a little harsh in that statement, but we certainly work with every business owner. We try to provide them with the resources they need. But once we have made a determination that clearly identifies that it's not ours to repair, I feel like we've got to hold to our guns and, and take that approach, or we're never going to establish that precedent that has, has kind of gone the other way for so many years.
Yes, and, and I, I don't want to come across as saying that I'm not in support of all of the points that you presented tonight. I am in support of all of those points. I, I just know that no business likes a surprise. And so if they're, I'm not saying it needs to be a mass message to everyone, but I do think that it should be tailored to a point that when this does happen in the six to eight that's happening either this year or next year or, or 10 years from now. Like you said, some of our piping is over 50 years old, that they know it's coming and they can plan for that. And, and to know that, of course, they can use the city as a resource as well.
Sure, I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, and we'll discuss that internally as to the best way to message that.
Thank you, Director Horn. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Before I continue, I noticed that Manager Crumstock and Attorney Wolf's hands are up. So, prior to Alderman Budmats, Manager Crumstock and then Attorney Wolf?
I do want to clarify one thing that Director Horn stated. In the past, it's been some time, but when we do get information from Public Works to finance, we have invoiced certain businesses for the repair that we've done. It could be a condominium association or it could be something. But we have invoiced in the past, it has to come from Public Works, what was done, how many hours. And typically, if we sent out a bill, we would receive payment or if someone else had an arrangement that we did it. Another thing that actually has been done, and, and do you want to thank Kevin Casey and Jeff Stewart, not Linda Stewart, who's on the register, actually being on, but John Smoji, who used to be here before, all the valves and all the work that they've done. So when you look at the Dominix property, that was a private water area, but we would go in there every so often because of the concern of the hydrants or something like that. But we always made sure if we were there that we had open communication with the groups. And again, Kevin and Jeff are fantastic, talking to those individuals and the condo associations to make sure that they know if we're on the property and we are doing the work, there's a potential that they might get an invoice. But I do want to clarify that, that when we do get information from Public Works, we have invoiced in the past those businesses.
Thank you. Manager Crumstock, Attorney Wolf?
Thank you, Mayor. Another thing I just wanted to point out is that I think it's the intention of the city staff going forward that we actually establish a policy that would, you know, identify what the city would want, how, how they would treat these matters going forward. And that policy would come before the city council to get officially adopted, whether that's in the form of, you know, just approving a policy on, you know, water, water mains and sewer lines, or whether it's code changes. But that's just another measure of, you know, public knowledge with respect to what will be happening going forward.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf, on that. Continuing on with Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, something that came to mind then, can I assume that we are maintaining a certain number of fire hydrants for private property owners that we would not necessarily be maintaining after, and such an ordinance were passed? And do we have a, an idea of the number of hydrants that would be?
Actually, it's, it's interesting, Alderman Budmats. We actually have a pretty good program for letting property owners know that the hydrant is theirs to repair. For some reason, the, the conversation changes when it's a water main break. So, we are pretty good at getting private property owners to repair or replace their hydrants that are identified during our hydrant flushing program or as part of our leak detection survey that we do annually. Or as part of our leak detection survey that we do annually. What we do to the hydrants generally is we operate them, we flush them to provide fresh water through the line. And we do some minor maintenance that is really uh done to ensure that when a fireman comes to respond to an emergency. That the hydrant is operational and and can be used in a fire response. So, yeah, that is probably something we do perform, but I I. You know, that is very typical in most communities.
Thank you. Thanks for the response.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this might be more for uh Director Gallagher or uh Manager Crumstock. So just the the process that Director Horn just walked through, where if it is on private property, I am in full support of what's been proposed to us tonight. Is, and I'm guessing the answer is yes, but I just want to confirm because based on the write-up, it looks like the average cost of one of these repairs can be about fifteen thousand dollars. Granted, if it's one o'clock in the morning, Kevin and his crew's out there at one in the morning versus one in the afternoon, it can fluctuate. And maybe do a Walmart or to a Meyer, something like that. Well, fifteen thousand dollars is a fair amount of money even to a conglomerate like that. If it would be to a residential or an HOA or something like that, I'm guessing we would set up some type of payment plan. We'd be very flexible. Given the emergency situation of this, is that is that correct, Director Gallagher or Manager Crumstock?
You are correct. Yes.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any other questions from the council for staff or Director Horn? And if not, then uh, again, thank you, Director Horn, for the presentation. And we look forward to seeing the ordinance uh come back before the council with a little bit more. Uh, clarity and direction for you guys to help the community and your employees in the Water Department. And uh, we will now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is uh holiday decorations for the twenty twenty-one. Um, and this, I think we're going to defer to Assistant Director Joelle in Charlton.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Thank you. It seems like we just finished our holiday decorations, but as we discussed back in October. Some of the planning for putting these decorations together does take place rather early in the year. So we are back. In response to your request back in October to look at both the Christmas tree lighting event location. As well as to evaluate some longer term holiday decoration initiatives. Uh, and those are geared to address the goal and the new comprehensive plan to improve the city's sense of place in various locations throughout the city. I I believe back in October, council had also mentioned the possibility of spending or or looking at some discussion into a broader or. A broader issue of branding or introducing new public improvements as a means to improve our commercial appeal and marketability. Uh, and although I'm very excited about council's interest in in that project and that endeavor. That is a pretty big concept for us to to right now with some of the other items that we're working on and the initiatives we have in our in our pocket right now. So we can definitely. Come back to that later and talk about that a little bit more, but I do want to focus on the first two items that we talked about in the presentation tonight. Uh, as with any good planning process, we always look at three very important questions. It's what do we have, what do we want, and how do we get it? And that was kind of the outline of the report that was provided to you in your packets. The what do we have in the report identified what we've done historically for the lighting event. Uh, and it listed the locations and methods of the holiday decorations that we've currently used as well. So let's start with the lighting ceremony itself. Um, I think everyone's aware that the historical event started with a. A decoration of a tree at the McDonald's site on Kirchhoff Road. A couple of years ago, the uh McDonald's came in for some renovation to their project. We were undergoing some improvements to the street. And then we were also faced with the relocation of the fire station. And those, all of those events and as well as uh some other things combined in that year to require us to find an alternate location. And that location. Was selected down at Central Road at the Historical Museum with the spaghetti dinner that had previously been hosted at the fire station. Uh, being moved to the Willow Bend School. Um, that was a very successful event that year for our first location. It worked pretty well. And after that event, we got some feedback from uh various individuals in the Public Works Department, and we moved forward pretty quickly with plans. To make that event location better for the following year. And those plans included supplementing electrical power on the light poles along Barker. So that we could add some holiday decorations to those light poles to make it a little bit more festive for the walk between. The museum and the school for the spaghetti dinner. We were making those plans to go into twenty twenty. Um, COVID obviously changed that. And then as well, we heard a little bit later in the year, uh, some council's interest to instead potentially move the location of the lighting ceremony or. Add some lighting, again, depending on COVID, how we were looking at it at that particular time, to the Owl and Kirchhoff location. Uh, the vacant property that's kitty corner from our city hall. Uh, we provided some cost estimates to have that work outsourced because it was done late in the year. And I think council was interested in doing that. But really chose to um defer that discussion to now to to save those uh dollars in the event. We wanted to look at it again early this year and have. Public Works crews do that work instead. Um, so uh. We do see this, the benefits to both sites, uh, both the Owl and Kirchhoff, and and listen to the conversation the council had. Uh, and the report went into some pros and cons of both of those sites. I think um, if you're looking for a recommendation from staff, my recommendation would be that we continue the Central Road site. As a potential official tree lighting ceremony. Um, again, it's given some of those pros, like the parking, the accessibility. We have a a really good opportunity to better manage traffic flow in that location better. As well as the trite and true site of the spaghetti dinner and and some of the improvements that we made there. If we did move forward with that site, I don't think it doesn't mean we couldn't follow up with a new or better event on Kirchhoff Road. That was geared to promote the business. I I know the council was saying, oh, we really need to focus our efforts on Kirchhoff Road so that the businesses can gain those benefits. Maybe what we could do is have a a different benefit on Kirchhoff Road the next day. But you could maybe tie the two events together, especially if we could figure out a way for the merchants to set up booths or provide coupons. Um, at the holiday lighting and the spaghetti dinner and inviting people to come to the downtown, maybe even the next day or or whatever day we would designate. Um, sticking with the Central Road location also has the added benefits that we could leave room in an increased budget. To do some of the new things that I also provided in the uh report, which I'll go through briefly uh at this point. Uh, I'll get to that in a second. If if we do choose, I I want to make sure council is aware that if we do choose to keep the location along Kirchhoff. Uh, we could do that for an additional cost of about five to seven thousand dollars. And that's. That's with Public Works doing the work. And I know we briefly went through that lat- late last year. And that cost would be to install the power, purchase lights and install lights on an existing twenty foot tall artificial tree that we acquired last year. We did put that tree out. We would need to do some things to make sure that the tree could withstand uh winds and and other things. But we're pretty confident we could um accomplish some type of a tree lighting uh decoration ceremony at that particular like. Pick particular location for around seven thousand dollars. Uh, moving on to the phasing in of enhanced decorations throughout the community. Uh, again, this is a a great thing uh to hear council's interest on, and we we had a real good time coming up with a smorgasbord of possibilities for. Um, enhancing our holiday um lighting and decorations in different parts of the communities. And basically, we came up with nine different categories or locations of things for you to consider. Uh, first, obviously, we have a lot of things that we we listed that we do already do on Kirchhoff Road. Which includes the tree lighting uh or the tree wrapping with various lights. And then we also do provide. Um, light pole decorations as well. Um, there are many locations on Kirchhoff that we could further enhance. Um, both west and east of the areas that we currently do. So that's that's kind of the first thing that we identified as something that we could do a little bit more of. Again, that would. Further enhance the visibility of our businesses in the Kirchhoff Road corridor. Um, somewhat related, the second item is uh do some enhancements on Gateway Park. And I guess we could have thrown this into the category of. Filling in Kirchhoff Road enhancements, but this is one that I think the staffs in prior years already spent some pretty significant time. Looking into and have some really good ideas. And it is really a very key focal point for our community. So I think that's that also deserves some. Uh, consideration and and already has a lot of things in place that we could add some things pretty easily. Um, we also looked at the fire stations as something that we could provide some additional holiday decorations. Uh, our formal entry signs, we have both formal and informal. So when I say the formal signs, I mean the the brick monument based signs. Uh, that usually include some landscaping, sometimes some lighting around them. Uh, we have eight locations in the community and. Uh, some of them could be just holiday green, so we don't have to get into the added expense of lighting if power isn't available. Or if power is available, maybe we could look at some of those enhancements. If that's important, another. Feature that we're seeing a lot of communities implement, especially along their formal entry signs, is the use of solar power. So. It might be possible to get some lit decorations utilizing solar powered uh facilities at those locations. The informal signs, I think I provided a picture in the staff report. We have sixteen locations for those that are are. Areas where you're passing from one suburb into the other. It's not quite a what we would define as a gateway. But it's a way for motorists to see that they're entering into the community. Um, putting some greenery, a wreath, something on those signs might be uh an attractive alternative to let people know they're in Rolling Meadows. Um, we also looked at several areas uh along the I fifty-three exits and and those particularly at Algonquin. Uh, seemed to kind of cry out for some additional uh holiday decorations. It is one of the major ways that people from fifty-three enter into Rolling Meadows. And uh, really, there's not a lot there to offer people to let them know that they're enrolling Meadows. I think that's a really good opportunity to look at. Potential uh either in the rights of way, which we we might need to work with the states or the state or um potentially with some private property owners to. Partner with them on some possibilities at those locations. I also heard the council say that there, you know, we focus our efforts on Kirchhoff Road. What about our other commercial corridors? So. The Plum Grove Road corridor came to mind. Um, Algonquin Road has uh several different types of commercial corridors at various locations that we could look at. Um, the triangle area that uh Rob mentioned earlier in his report has uh its own kind of commercial entity that could be. Um, promoted as well as the golf, the Gulf Road corporate corridor. Again, everything could be tied together in those areas with. Something that that ties the community together. Or we could come up with some banners or special lightings that were specific to those, but also. Genuinely Rolling Meadows that could um come up with some kind of a branding that would help promote them. Um, the eighth item that I have listed was greens or banners on poles at entrances to residential subdivisions. So a lot of times residential subdivisions will have monument signs and, excuse me, do their own um decorations on those facilities. But we oftentimes have a a streetlight pole at those entrances as well that we could at least add a banner or or perhaps do some green wrapping around the poles. Um, finally, some other ideas that we had um as we kind of uh drove through town in. In our Google Maps were some of the public-private commercial areas. I mean, sometimes you just see. An evergreen tree on a commercial site or residential area. It's like, oh, that would be a nice tree to to decorate, but it's on private property. Um, or the Continental Towers, if you're traveling on ninety and you see Continental Towers parking lot, it's like. Wow, that would be really cool if there was some some really uh nice Christmas decoration on top of that parking deck, right? I, you know, just to throw out a couple of ideas. Um, I think those are conversations that we can have. We, you know, we have a lot of good relationships with some of these. Commercial entities and talk with them regularly anyway. Maybe we can uh find out about their appetite for. Uh, adding those or partnering with the city to potentially uh do some things on on those. Haven't really looked into that yet, but that's a possibility. There may be other ideas in these nine categories that we've thrown out. We'd love to hear those from you at the. You know, when we're done here and trying to get some feedback. From you. So moving on, after we have looked at uh what do we have, uh, what do we want, how do we get it? Then we we want to get to step two, which is uh needing to hear from you what your ideas are. Uh, once we get that, we'll come up with a plan that we can either report back to you if we need to, or we can set up a time to have another discussion. Uh, more formally, if it if it requires something more than updating you in a staff report or in the Friday notes. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to council to address the questions that are outlined at the end of the report. Uh, the first one is really, um, and why don't we just do this one at a time, Mayor, if you will. Um, focus first on the preferred location of the holiday lighting event. And whether it's at Central Lo- Central Road at the museum, whether they would like to have it um reconsidered at the Owl and Kirchhoff side or. If it needs to be another site, I think, you know, that's great. We'll take feedback, but we might need to do a little bit more work to see what might be involved in that location.
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that. Um, we can go ahead and and just start with the straw vote on those two locations. And then before we get into identifying the second portion, which is. The top two or three um holiday decorations, I want to open the floor up for conversation.
Sure.
Before we get into those nine showings of hands to try and whittle that down. Um, so beginning with the the first showing of hands, uh, those who are in favor of continuing at the um Central Road. Uh, and Barker location, which is where we had it the first time, those who are interested in continuing on that approach. And I see Alderman Budmats, Alderman Sanoyka, Alderman Bessesi, and Alderman O'Brien. Uh, thank you for that. Those who.
I'm sorry, I'm having a problem with my hand thing. Um, I I'm with that one. I'm fixing it now.
Okay, so then that's also Alderwoman McHale. And um, then those who are opposed to the Owl and Barker location, please show your hand. Opposed to Owl and Barker.
Mr. Mayor, I am, I my hand just disappeared somehow.
Oh, no. That's interesting. Um, okay, then thank you for sharing that. Alderman Diasis, are you having issues locating the hand too? I don't know that I counted you for either.
No, I'm I'm, no, I'm not opposed to Central. I just think the the Kirchhoff Road is a better location.
Okay. All right, then we're gonna then take that straw vote now for those in favor of the Kirchhoff and Owl location.
My one hand, yes, please.
Okay, Ald- Alderwoman Beniziano and Alderman Diasis. So that's two for that. And and at this point, uh, for staff, it appears as though. Uh, the old Public Works location would next door to the museum, uh, with sufficient parking space. And then, um, again, the spaghetti dinner conversations to come next. Um, but before we get into these nine um options here for decoration enhancements. I do want to just open up the floor for dialogue. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the council?
Great.
I do see Alderman O'Brien, then Alderman Bessesi, and so on from there.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And this is just a thought, because I know we've really been trying to focus as best as we can. Seeing this is a longer term plan, which is great to see. Um, is just throwing it out there, yays or nays, or even I'd be open to other thoughts. Since we're trying to promote more on the west side of fifty-three, would it make sense to alternate? Since this is a longer term type of roadmap we're looking at here, so there'd be additional costs. We'd have to find a place to do it. But something I was thinking about is, okay, so if we do go with the Central Road and Barker by the high school. When it's on the east side, the next year, maybe we rotate it. I, and honestly, I don't know where it would go. I know we've got the park there on the corner by the new fire station. Parking would probably be a nightmare because the the new fire station lot wouldn't be big enough, but then we've got the Platinum Mortgage Building. So I just didn't know if, since this is a longer term strategy we're looking at. So I just didn't know if, since this is a longer term strategy we're looking at, would there be thoughts of rotating it once on the east side of 53, once on the west side of 53? Because I know we've discussed that as a council, so we can get more collaboration engagement with the city. Just a thought.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I think what what we should do with that is table it until staff can possibly make some suggestions based on geographic opportunities. And for now, focus on on this this particular 2021 scenario. And maybe if staff can bring something before that time, then you can bring that back for conversation for a long term incorporation. But let's let's try and focus on the 2021 time for now. But I I think that's a good idea for a community growth.
Great, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Alderman Bessesi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was very much in favor of the Central Road. However, I do believe it would be important to do something as well on Kirchhoff Road. I do like the ideas of expanding some of the decorations, maybe coming all the way from flicker on down to Gateway Park or whatever, just just kind of make that a nice, very attractive thing. I have no problem with putting up a Christmas tree in the vacant lot until such time as we can decide or determine exactly what the long term use for that property will be. And as Alderman O'Brien said, we do need to not forget, you know, the west side of of 53 and incorporating some stuff in there as well. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman Sanoyka.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I know that Ward One and Ward Two will probably have something to say about their respective sections of the city. Ward Seven encompasses both east and west. However, I know that the reason, one of the reasons that this long term planning request came from council originally was to incorporate other larger systemic boundaries that exist on the west side, such as school districts and park districts that that separate the communities and and families. So I think it extends beyond that as well. We also have, and this was noted in the 10, the 10 year comprehensive plan, was that some of our addresses state Palatine, even though they exist within the municipality of Rolling Meadows. So I would be in favor of prioritizing any opportunity we have to demonstrate that Palatine addresses actually are a Rolling Meadows municipality. We can't change the addresses. That's the responsibility of the Postmaster General. But we can create theming in areas like this Plum Grove Corridor. And then also Algonquin and Gulf, which are borderlands with Arlington Heights. So that would be, that would be the priority that I would support. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Another hand, Alderman McHale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I too agree with Alderman Sanoyka regarding cohesive plan to incorporate the different the different sides of of Rolling Meadows. I did have a question, and this this is maybe because I I haven't been residential really Meadows my entire life. But is there a reason why we have to be tied to the spaghetti dinner? I know that it's tradition in a sense. But utilize, like, one of the cons on why we can't have the tree lighting on Kirchhoff is because there's not a place for us to walk to to get to a location for a spaghetti dinner. Was there any way to maybe see if there's another type of event that we could do perhaps? I know that in other communities, it's almost a little bit simpler where they just, is it Santa? Have, you know, cookies and milk and, you know, the local dance school comes and does the the routines and so on and so forth. But I feel like that's kind of holding things back a tiny bit. I also wanted to just mention that the the idea of having the tree at the historical center, while not all businesses are on Kirchhoff Road and it is very nicely decorated. But, you know, I think that having it at the historical center does bring definitely a sense of community into Rolling Meadows. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Appreciate your perspective on on that. Maybe that is something we can explore. Historically, the spaghetti dinner worked out of convenience because the tree lighting drew the crowd. That crowd could transition to the fire station when this occurred on Kirchhoff Road at the McDonald's. But I I can appreciate now maybe disconnecting what was historically connected to maybe get greater exposure for one thing than the other. Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found my raise my hand button finally. It reappeared. So I I believe I was with for former Alderman Mike Cannon on this one on imposing it at the historical museum. Although it does greatly benefit, you know, our ward being that it's in our backyard. It's just that it benefits, you know, really two wards that gets to see it quite often. You know, and obviously the students that, you know, drive to the high school and, you know, into the two schools over there. You know, so and I realize that Public Works put in, you know, a lot of time and effort and money into, you know, that plan on Barker. However, I feel like our comprehensive plan has been to move forward with, you know, building up our downtown area on Kirchhoff Road. And doing that would only make sense in emphasizing our community events on Kirchhoff Road. So I understand, you know, moving forward, we'll have the lighting ceremony on, you know, the historical museum. But I would definitely like to do something at the property, you know, across from the an owl and and Kirchhoff. But that being said, with this coming year, as most of you can anticipate, COVID is not going to be going anywhere, you know. So I don't anticipate us being able to have turnout for a spaghetti dinner like we've had in the years past. So to pull us to an event just because of a spaghetti dinner, I think is premature in the light that we may have to cancel it anyways. So if we can do events outside, that would be better formatted for the year that we're approaching and maybe future years to come, might be something that staff needs to really look into to plan accordingly. Not that I'm opposed to spaghetti dinner. It's a great tradition, but I just think times have changed and we need to change with that. And I will yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Yeah, who knows what this next round of December will bring with the physical distancing, whether or not we can get back to what used to be normal. I do have a quick question for Ms. Czak, Lori Czak, about the tree lighting. When it originally took place on Kirchhoff at McDonald's, was the intention of lighting the tree to create an event for the community? Or was that a byproduct of trying to decorate an area to keep the downtown street festive? Do you do you recall what the intention was when first setting out to do that?
Mayor, hi, hi, everybody. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. The intention of, are you asking what the intention was of moving the tree lighting to Central?
No, when it was, when when the event was originally created, was the intention to establish an event that draw residents to a certain location for the sense of community and for an event? Or was it, we should have a tree on display for the holidays? And while we're doing that, let's make it a tree lighting ceremony? And the byproduct was an event, which came first? The notion of having an event to draw community together to experience the tree lighting? Or was it a tree lighting and the byproduct was an event to bring the community out?
I think I would say that it was to to maximize the effectiveness of both the tree lighting and the spaghetti dinner at a location. So I don't know if one was more important than the other. It seemed like many people were tied to both of those events.
But the the purpose of lighting the tree was to draw community out on a given day to celebrate an experience of lighting the tree and then forwarding themselves to the spaghetti dinner?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, you know, we we go back to the fact that I I think more than anything, parking is going to be, you know, a huge factor in whatever is considered for a future location.
Yeah, and I think back to Central Road and this last experience. There was plenty of parking at the Conyers Center, the high school. Owl Central Road was was full of cars down to Owl Drive. And, you know, we had great feedback from it. And the intention of that tree lighting at the museum was to draw the community together for an occasion. And then the byproduct was having a residual tree lit with festive decorations beyond that. And so I think one thing we as a council need to 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 do is frame this in the sense that what what are we looking for? Are we looking purely for holiday decorations? Or are we looking for an opportunity to bring the community together during the holidays and celebrate during a tree lighting? And I think that will help foster our direction to what it is the priority is over. Is it purely for decorating throughout the city to create this ambiance of festivity throughout the entire community? Or are we lighting a tree to celebrate bringing the community together in that event? And so I think if if we can look at it with that regard, it might help us get closer to what our ideals are. And I think based on the council count is that Owl is the majority by the straw vote here as far as location goes. And it does have sufficient parking. But then the council should ask themselves now, are we doing this for the event to draw community together at the time? Or are we just trying to decorate the community for the holiday season? And I think that will help us when we get to this next part with the nine components that we have here that we're going to take a straw vote on shortly. So I appreciate you giving me the the history on the tree when it was at McDonald's.
Absolutely.
And then I see manager Crumstock and then Alderman Bessesi.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And just to give a little more perspective on it, it was to bring people down to the downtown, but it was also the start of the official lights for the downtown. So once the tree was up, all those lights that you see down the Kirchhoff Road were on after that point in time. The spaghetti dinner did not start until the 60th anniversary. And then obviously talking with staff and talking with the foundation and also the council, that's when the spaghetti dinner started after that as a community event overall. So I hope that gives a little more perspective, but it was really the tree lighting started the lighting of the community in that downtown area. And then it grew into a larger community event because Santa used to give out, you know, additional cookies and additional candy canes. But it grew into a larger community event, starting with the 60th anniversary for the city into the spaghetti dinner and then additional time with Santa.
Okay, thank you for that. I forgot about the fact that it was a catalyst for lighting all of Kirchhoff Road. I did, that slipped my mind. Thank you. Alderman Bessesi.
Well, Barry basically said most of what I was going to say. Historically speaking, it was definitely, it was the start, it was kind of the start of the Christmas season for Rolling Meadows. Also, when it was established, it established Kirchhoff Road was a lot, had a lot more on it at the time. It wasn't as residential as it is now. All those complexes along Kirchhoff Road were not there. We had Crawfords, we had, you know, it was a very much a big center of town. And it's kind of the beginning of all the lights. I think the thing that our citizens have always always liked is just having somewhere where they go for the tradition of the tree lighting, whether it's on Central or it's on Kirchhoff or wherever. I don't know that it necessarily matters. And then lastly, when we did take the straw vote, I believe the Central Road was the majority vote versus the versus Kirchhoff and Owl.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, did I say Kirchhoff and Owl when I meant to say Public Works on Central? That's my mistake. Yeah, I was meaning Old Public Works in the museum on Central.
Yeah, now I actually think there's might be a way we could do both. You know, let them both at the same time. It's just a matter of where we do the Santa, you know, the Santa part of it. So, thank you.
Didn't unmute myself there. Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Any other questions or comments before we start doing a show of hand for these nine options here to follow staff's request to identify the top two or three candidates? And by that, we will then end up moving down the other ones that are less important as it is requesting for feedback here. Any other comments, questions, or concerns before we start doing that? Okay, then what I'd like you to do is when when we go through these, just think to yourself, what are your top two or three? And show your hand when you're in favor. So beginning with number one, if you are in favor of filling or enhance Kirchhoff Road corridor. And that we have O'Brien, Veneziano, Bessesi, and Diasis. And just real quick, is there anyone who's having trouble with their and Budmats? So that's five for number one. Anybody having hand issues before I move on to number two? Okay, number two, enhanced lighting decorations at Gateway Park. Show of hands, who finds that is one of their top two or three? So that looks like a zero for number two. Number three, add lighting and decorations at the two fire stations. Okay, no hands for that. So that brings us to number four, enhance lit and or unlit decorations at seven formal entry signs. Okay, and I have Alderman Diasis, Budmats, O'Brien, and Veneziano. That's four. Anyone with a hand issue? All right, I'm not going to ask that anymore. Hopefully everyone's hand issues have been resolved, if not, just speak up. Moving on to number five, add new decorations. Yeah, add new decorations at informal entry signs. Okay, that's zero for that. That brings us to number six, I-53 exit enhancement at Algonquin intersection. Alderman Sanoyka, McHale, Diasis, Bessesi, and O'Brien. Five. Number seven is going to be investigate addition of lighting pole banner or tree decorations on other local commercial corridors. We're looking at Alderman Sanoyka, McHale, Bessesi, Budmats, Diasis, Veneziano. Six.
You can toss me in there, Mr. Mayor, if we get four votes. I use my three, but I do like that idea too, but
Now you're breaking rules.
Right, you could have consensus, unanimous consensus, but I don't want to vote four times when we are asked for three.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, well, you know, it doesn't have to be strict about it here. Number eight, add greens or banners on light poles at entrances to residential subdivision entries. Okay, nothing there. And the last one, number nine, public and private or intergovernmental possibilities. Anyone interested in exploring those opportunities? I see Alderman Sanoyka and Budmats, two on there. So it appears as though we have one, six, and seven as the the top three. And that's because there are seven and five votes respectively for each of those two, with the fourth one coming in. with the fourth one coming in fourth place, which is enhancing lit or unlit decorations. Any comments or concerns about that? Again, that's one, six, and seven on here. Council, have any questions or comments about that? Alderman Besessi? I think you're muted. Alderman Besessi, I think you're muted.
Yeah, the one thing I would like to see is if there's something we could do, at least for, for holiday decorations, particularly along something like, uh, uh, Hick's or Plum Grove Road. Um, just to kind of tie the whole city together a little bit better.
Okay, so Hick's or Plum Grove Road. And what, and what, what, what are you thinking specifically at that intersection or what?
Um, just whether it be um, banners on light poles, uh, some decorating where we can. Uh, cause it's kind of like you have the down, you have what we call the downtown on Kirchhoff Road. Now we have that Barker, uh, Historical Society area that's, it's kind of lit up. Uh, but the rest of the town is virtually ignored. So, um, I, I, I think is, you know, keeping in the spirit of the comprehensive plan. Uh, you know, something along Plum Grove Road. And, uh, uh, picks, you know, basically letting people know, you know, hey, Rolling Meadows is in the community in the, uh, the holiday spirit. You know, and something that they see that, you know, as they're driving through our town would be nice to, to have there, as long as we're not expending too much money on it.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Besessi. Uh, Director Horn, I saw your hand pop up when Alderman Besessi was speaking about those two intersections.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to relay that, that the overarching, um, discussion in the past and, um, uh, it, one of the options that was on the list, uh, was about these kind of remote locations or those western locations that can kind of provide some common theming for the community, uh, to tie it together. Staff is, has always planned on researching potential locations for the future. We certainly can bring that information back, um, to City Council when we bring, uh, a more comprehensive, uh, uh, look at what we're gonna do based with the information you provided tonight. But again, that, those items would just not be prioritized in our first few years of the program. But we expect this plan to last several years, so it's nothing we plan on doing and completing in two years and being done with it. So i- it's one of those things that's going to evolve over time, so.
Uh, thank you for, for reminding us of that. And, you know, for the sake of this conversation and the subject being the holiday decorations for 2021, I don't want to get all the way to the bottom of the rabbit hole tonight on this because we could continue for hours on it. But yeah, if staff can keep that in mind to, to produce more opportunities for the periphery of the residents within the community to, to get that same aesthetic and feel of the holidays as we get on our downtown Main Street areas. I think that's what the council's saying. Any other questions or comments on this particular subject before we move on to the, the third item on, on the agenda?
Mayor, if I could ask just one, for one further clarification, the local commercial corridors clearly was or had more votes than anyone, so. Uh, and then Alderman Besessi mentioned, you know, two local areas. Is it a fair statement to say that the council, if we're putting these in order of, of importance, you know, starting in year one and moving to year five, start with the more local, what I would call local business commercial like Plum Grove as opposed to that, the heavier uh, commercial areas on Algonquin and, um, Gulf Road, do those a little bit later in our cycle?
So let's, let's do a quick straw vote for that. That way we can have the council sentiment on it. Who's in favor of, of addressing the more local aspect of this before moving on to the commercial corridors? Those in favor of a more local? Okay, and we see Alderman Sanoyka, Mikhail, Besessi, Veniziano, O'Brien, and Diastis. So that's, that's six out of the seven. So I think we have the, uh, majority. And then, just for the sake of exercising the question, those opposed to starting with the local and moving to the commercial first? And that's Alderman Veniziano, Alderman Bud Mats on there. Thank you. Anything else? Assistant Director Charlton?
No, thank you. Very helpful feedback. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, next one is the, uh, item here for the news and views, the mayor and city council rotation for the back page mayor's corner column. Uh, we'll go ahead and start with manager Crumstock, uh, because we have it deferred to him. And then I'll give you, uh, my two cents on, on why I really think that this is a good opportunity for the council to participate in this newsletter. So manager Crumstock, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously before you is a discussion, um, especially in a long night. Uh, this hopefully will be the quickest conversation that we have, so you can watch the beautiful snow as it falls down and its little, uh, event that we're watching through the window. But, for years, um, the mayor has had a column in the back of the printed news and views. And at this point in time, um, obviously with some discussions with the mayor, he has decided to open this column, really to the full city council. And the last one that is proposed that he wrote is all done in the January, February one. So, with conversations, um, went back and as many of you know, I have a deck of cards in my office. And seven cards were brought out, selection was made by me. And how it felt was the seven of diamonds fell as the first choice. So, Ward seven would be the first one who would be up. And for that, unfortunately, you only have a, about three weeks to get that back to Ryan. But again, the idea is to really, um, have a column that would be topic relevant to the whole city. Give you a voice to the whole community, so they know each of the aldermen from different wards, but also different experiences maybe that you want to talk about. But it really talks about the entire city. And the schedule goes after that. It was a high-low from that. And that's why it goes from Ward seven down to one, two, three, four, five, six, then to the mayor, and then starting with seven again. It's only for the printed one. Um, and again, that comes in January, February, March, April, and continues on that. For the electronic e-news and views, we do not have a column. So with that, that is my really brief conversation that hopefully the recommendation is to support this and continuing. And unfortunately, Alderman Sanoyka, you have the shortest turnaround, um, for this column that's going to be coming up.
Yeah, and you know, just to piggyback on that, because I don't want to belabor this. The point of this is an opportunity to share that piece of real estate. If you don't want to participate, you don't have to. It's 250 words that you're allotted. So, you, when I, when I write these articles, it's not like I can really get into anything substantive, more than 250 words. I try and keep it lighthearted. I try and keep it relevant and topical. I do receive a lot of feedback from residents who do read it. And I, to be honest, I, I figure nobody would read what I write, so, um, it's a pleasant surprise when people say, I, I appreciated what you wrote. And after hearing that a number of times from numerous residents, I figured this is a great opportunity to give the council a platform. We all have our own platforms anyway, speaking with our wards. But I think it's a good way to allow the fourth ward alderman to speak about something that's occurring in the fourth ward for the readers in the seventh ward or second ward and so on. And I just want to see that, um, same recognition of opportunity for relationship building between residents and the council that I got to see with it. And again, if you're not interested in writing an article 250 words, I'm happy to continue to write in that space. But it's my hope that, um, you do choose to write and share something of importance, topically of course, with 250 words, out to the residents of Rolling Meadows. And so with that, that's my intent. I hope there's not much discussion or conversation. And if you're interested, that's great. If you want to sit out, I'll write an article or we can move on to the next council member in line. Any questions or comments on that? Alderman Mikhail?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is probably for manager Crumstock, but I noticed that Ward one, um, is set for a column to be due by April 9th, and the election is April 6th. So I don't know that maybe we want to look at the rotation.
Let's see the year real quick. Just, is it, I don't have it in front of me on that page.
It's just something to take a look at.
Columns due on February 9th. Um, manager Crumstock, we can, but, um, that's in 2023.
It's 2021.
You're 2021.
It's the first one right after Alderman Sanoyka.
Okay, then yeah, maybe we should push that one, manager Crumstock, or pull a new card. Uh, nothing here is written in stone, but good catch on that. Anything else? Okay, then, uh, let's, let's move on to the next item because it's already nine o'clock and there's no reason to belabor that. The next one is, uh, committees and commissions. So back to you, manager Crumstock, and then attorney Wolf, you can participate when relevant and necessary.
I'm going to keep this, uh, as short as possible as I can. Um, and obviously, city attorney Melissa Wolf will be able to, um, obviously for some time, we have some committees that have been active, some that have not been active. We have some that are by state statutes, some by our local ordinances. We also have some that the volunteer group has become more active, and at this point in time, it makes sense for them to become a full committee and then obviously monitor if they fall off or something else happens, then we can always reassess and then maybe put them into another group. One thing that is prevalent is that the city council does need to establish, they might not meet, but we do need to establish certain, um, committees like the ethics committee. But for other ones for federal and state requirements, we might be able to do an ad hoc committee for certain of those. So, it's taken some time, some discussions, obviously. Um, city attorney Wolf and I have gone back and forth on some other ideas. But when you do look at the overall, um, what we're bringing you is also a draft ordinance. The draft ordinance just has to be tweaked in one place. It talks about a seven-person environmental committee. We were actually talking about a five-person environmental committee. It's because right now, there's really, when you look back for the past years, there's really been five people have been active and we've had volunteers come and go. It allows it to stay with five to make sure that it stays active. And then if it falls off, then we would have to reassess and maybe move into one of the other groups. But, when you look at the overall and just really summarizing for people who might be hearing this for the first time, we do have a Board of Fire and Police Commission. Um, we, that is, uh, in the city code and is statutory mandated. It is working perfectly fine. There are no vacancies. A Board of Local Improvements is in our, uh, overall um, ordinances, and we do talk about it. It's recommended, but we do talk about that it does need to exist. But at the same point in time, it's in the draft ordinance what they would actually do. And utilizing the Capitol Projects Committee, it might be the easiest way to assess that. It's also one of those that comes up every so often by our code, but also by legislators that ask, where's your board, Board of Local Improvements? Commission on Disabilities, it's really a part of the defunct Urban Affairs Committee. We are recommending that it would come back as an ad hoc commission as needed. So again, it would actually be around, and we do refer to it when we go for grants, we do refer to it. Specifically, part of it is also, there's a resolution out there that has made me the ADQ coordinator, but we would like to make that into the ordinance and the code, so it's actually standing out there. That code is, and that resolution has been around since 2010. But now it also points directly into the code. And again, that's one thing that we do get questioned by some of our grants and some of our identifications. Human Relations Commission, it's really defunct part of that Urban Affairs. Um, and again, that can be brought back, um, part of our special committees, part of our statute as ad hoc, um, group as needed. Specifically, if there's ever a question about what are you doing on a specific thing. Um, it is referenced in the Fair Housing provisions in the city code, but it's also referred sometimes in, um, state and grants that we're looking for. The Veterans Committee is working perfectly fine. They are currently operating and there are no vacancies. And for the committee, it actually is very active. Urban Affairs Committee, this is the one that was supposed to be a catchall and dealing with it. It's really defunct. Um, it's really recommended that at this point in time, we would dissolve the committee and then put in some of these other pieces. One thing in the statute and part of our code is we do talk about the Ethics Commission. Um, city has a different ethics group than the county and different from the state. Um, as Alderman Diastis knows, this has come up, um, a few times about enhancing it and growing that. At this point in time, we do have an Ethics Committee by state law. It should be up and running. Um, so we just say, please, appoint three appointments, and that's actually in the overall. The Environmental Committee that I referred to for the last few years, obviously when, um, Public Works Director Fred Vogt was around, these volunteers have been very active on Arbor Day. They've been very active during the duck races when we brought them in for different things. So there's really five with additional volunteers. They maybe comes, sometimes up to 12 individuals. So at this point in time, a little bit different of a feel, but we're actually trying to make them into a full committee with five members and then all the volunteers that they can to keep them active. And then those five individuals, if they drop off or something, then we can re, because if it starts falling apart like the Urban Affairs, then we might have a discussion. But this is a completely new, um, group, and obviously it would be staffed by Public Works still as they are done right now. Electrical Commission, it is in our city code. Um, we do need to have that. Appointments are needed. I can tell you that I've been here since 1999. They've never met, but we still have to have one of those, um, pieces. The Board of Trustees for Fire and Board of, um, Trustees for Police Pension, we're in compliance with that. There are no changes actually stated in that. We do talk about the Board of Health. Um, and again, that was also part of the Urban Affairs Committee, which is now defunct. And again, as we've mentioned before, we could always create them as an ad hoc if we needed them for some additional things. At this point in time, most of our health issues go back to Cook County, the overarching health group. And then we do have the Library Board. There are no changes. They are compliant with code. The Economic Development Committee recommendations, and they are in the code and there are pre, there are two, uh, current vacancies that are appointed for this. And then the final one, which is by state statute plus our own code, that we talk about the Planning and Zoning Commission. Right now, there's one vacancy appointment needed. So part of the research, as you've seen before, is obviously where certain pieces are. And then the draft ordinance with that one change that would change for the Environmental Committee from seven to five to make sure that they stay relevant. You can have as many volunteers, it's just the voting members to keep them along. With that, that's my long-winded, uh, startup for Alder, um, for the mayor and the alderman, and if, um, attorney Wolf would like to add to it, but I hope that did the summary of most of the pieces.
Uh, thank you, manager Crumstock. Attorney Wolf, anything to add before I open the floor to the council for questions or comments?
Uh, no, Mayor. Thank you. Manager Crumstock did a very, uh, nice and comprehensive job, and I'm available to answer any question.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, with that, are there any questions, comments, or concerns from council? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this is a question for manager Crumstock rather than attorney Wolf. The recommendations to decommission some of these groups, so these functional groups, things like the Human Relations or Commission for the Disabled, um, are, you had also mentioned that one of the other committees or the Health Committee, uh, as a subcommittee from, uh, Urban Affairs would also be decommissioned. And the reason for that is because you stated that we already have network connections with Cook County Board of Health. And, um, I guess my question is i- if those other needs or perspectives or advocacy groups or functions that these committees would, would serve, um, are, are all of those already accounted for through these other um, governmental organizations at the county level or through some other level?
Some of them you still need to have, because when you're going for a grant that they're asking for. And that's why specifically says, um, where our city code allows for an ad hoc commission to be special committee set up if the issue comes up or something comes up. And with talking to And with talking to City Attorney Wolf, the question comes out when things get pointed during the grants, do you have a ADA coordinator or do you have a Human Relations Group? Or if you have, those are things where we can point to them that, A, certain things can be set up. It's the ordinance that would clean up some of those things. And that's why specifically for those others that have just really were part of Urban Affairs and then just fell apart, but we still point to them as individuals or a committee. It would be the special committee set up for those issues and then whenever that issue is done.
Thanks, Manager Crumstock. So then that kind of, that, I guess that's where the root of the question is, and I'm sorry I'm being meandering. It's getting kind of late. Beyond fulfilling a checkbox or requirement for a grant application, my concern is that some of these functional committees do serve a purpose beyond that checkbox, right? And I want to make sure that before we start decommissioning any of these, you know, socially focused groups or advocacy groups, that we are ensuring that those functions are being carried out in a comprehensive and beneficial way so that the council is making decisions that take into consideration human relations and concerns of people with disabilities or the environment or any of these other suggested decommissioned groups. So is, does that analysis have been conducted?
Yeah, so what I can tell you, that has been done. So when you're looking at disability ADA, I do spend a lot of time with that, with Public Works and Community Development. And there is a procedure when a complaint comes in that Community Development, Public Works deals with it. And then obviously it comes to me at that point. But we do have all these covered as administratively, and that's why we're able to deal with each one of these. The only issue that again, Ethics Committee, it would have to be established. It should be established that they may never ever meet, but it still needs to be in there. But Board of Health, we do look at those with Public Works, Community Development. All these items, staff is maintaining and obviously the city council. When you approve the budget, that's why we're able to do the ADA upgrades on sidewalks and some other pieces. We still have a plan that we're following, but we do follow each one of these and it is being covered staff-wise. But it's not one of those that a commission or what people were showing up to actually do any additional work.
And then another follow-up to that is whether, and I absolutely believe that staff would take every complaint seriously and address it quickly. And I don't think that that's really the concern that I have. I, I think that my concern with this is that we might be missing out on some proactive opportunities to ensure that our community is being really thoughtful about long-term planning and ensuring that we're including all of our stakeholders. So.
Alderman Sanica, I would like to pause you right there because I am on the same parallel with you with this. And what I was going to say after the questions go through for Manager Crumstock, because I believe that there is a follow-up conversation that the council has to engage in for the committee whole, for a future one. But that this, this conversation tonight is basically a discussion about the structure of these active contributing committees and commissions. But from here forward, we do have to have a secondary discussion about the function of these committees once we've cleaned up the slate. And then make sure that we as a council, make sure that staff and those members of the committees are all aware of the roles, the expectations, the, the initiatives that each of these committees and commissions are supposed to engage in. And so what I'd like to do after we get through this conversation with Manager Crumstock and cleaning up the, the committees and commissions, that we circle back at a future date of a committee of the whole, hopefully in the near future, that then talk about the functionality of each one of them to make sure that we are not missing something that we need or make sure that the members of the committees and commissions are satisfied in the efforts that they're putting in with the time that they're volunteering.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Mayor. At this time, then I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just two real quick things. And I'm grabbing my postal notes here because a resident grabbed me as I was leaving for the office this morning. They were out for a walk and I was heading to the expressway. They just had two quick thoughts is, and I noticed the same thing as I was looking through, and I'm sure it's probably just all part of the cleanup because I noticed it in the new Environmental Committee one, is if we can just, there's reference to his or her, if we can make it his slash her or he slash she across all the committees since we're doing a cleanup. And then the other question I was only able to partially answer that I noted here, they brought to my attention that, that only in two of our commissions, it's the Board of Fire and Police and Ethics. I was able to speak to the Ethics part just based on my own experience, but they had identified, and I went back and reread it myself, that it specifically called out no family of a council member, which I totally agree with, could be appointed to the Ethics Committee, rightfully so. But it was also on the Police Board and Fire Pen, or Fire Commission. So I don't know if anybody has any background, if that's required by a state statute, that Ethics I could explain. But the Police and Fire, they were just wanting from a consistency perspective, would we want to put them all consistent? I said I would bring it back to the group. I don't know the state statutes or anything like that, but that was just two questions I got on the way of heading to McDowns for my drive to the office coffee. And we could, we can defer that if that's more of the function of the group. Once we get to that, the next committee of the whole, I just told them I would bring it up tonight.
Who exactly were you directing that question to? Manager Crumstock, Attorney Wolf, as far as state statutes goes or regulations, permission, where were you?
I'm muted here. I would probably defer to either Manager Crumstock or Attorney Wolf because I know it was a joint effort between the two of them. The Ethics I totally get is that my wife shouldn't be on it or my kid or my in-laws or something like that. But I couldn't explain the difference of why it was only captured in two, and that was their question. From a consistency perspective, they thought it should be all or none, and I couldn't speak to that.
From a legal perspective, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners is dictated by state statute. So if that requirement is in that board, that's because of the, the state statute. With respect to the Ethics Commission, that's just something that's been proposed to the city council. Part of the reason for that requirement for the Ethics Commission from a legal perspective is that this commission may be actually overseeing, you know, alleged wrongdoing of one of the city council members or the elected officials. So, so that was the intention for that requirement for that commission member. And the remaining commissions, you know, they, they didn't have that conflict of interest that the Ethics Commission would have provided. But that's just a determination that the city council can make when, as you clean up these boards and commissions.
Great. Thanks for, thanks for clarifying. The Ethics, yeah, I was able to explain that it would be certainly a conflict of interest, but I was able to speak to the Police Fire Commission. So I appreciate that. So I guess that's probably just food for thought as we look at this. If we should make it consistent across all of our committees or commissions, that was just something brought to the council. So no official action or anything like that, Mr. Mayor. It was more of just a comment and inquiry from a resident.
Sorry, it didn't unmute. Thank you for that, Alderman O'Brien. Next hand here is Alderman Diastis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe you've already answered this question because I had a couple residents contact me and they said, how, what's our, what's our policies or procedures in terms of getting or doing, getting or doing volunteers? One, like for example, you know, all openings should be posted in the city website and in the newsletter. I think these items that they gave me and I've put down and I've kind of retyped them out is probably not the conversation we want to have tonight. Would you suggest that I email these suggestions and policies and procedures to everyone in the council for when we have a future meeting? You're muted. There you go.
Yeah, my mute doesn't unclick on the first try. So these questions are, they're, are they function of the committee or are they, are they part of a function to get on a committee, I guess?
More of a function to get on the committee than the function of the committee.
Okay. Attorney Wolf, where, where do you think this falls in terms of the preparation of the committees as Manager Crumstock is going through this exercise, cleaning these up? Would those questions be better suited for speaking on behalf of the Code of Ordinances that define our committees and commissions? Or is this something that we address this evening?
Well, I, I guess it would be, if Alderman Diastis says he's got something in writing that he'd like to share, you know, I, I think before I make that analysis, I'd like to look at exactly what he's talking about. But what I can say is what's been presented, you know, before the, the city council now is consistent with how the code provisions have been with respect to the committees and commissions. So that additional component of it has not been previously addressed in the city code.
Yeah, and I don't even know if it's really a part, it's not really a part of the code. Like I said, one of the first things I said was, you know, how, how do we commune, how do we, the city, communicate to the residents that there's openings in these various committees, you know? And, you know, one person said, well, put it on the city website, put it in the newsletter. So I don't think that these items that they gave me that we talked about are part of the code, but they're more of part of the procedures that we can employ, we can use to, to get people in. And, and what do we do once we, with the information they send us? So I'll send the information to you, Attorney Wolf, and, and you can let me know how you think we should deal with this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And in the future, I think if you're ever approached by a resident who's asking those questions, obviously you can direct them to the website, to the committee or commission of their choosing. Like if they have a, an affinity for planning and zoning, then direct them there and there will be that roster of vacant or non-vacant and which terms are coming up to expiration. And then when there is a need to fill vacancies, we do post in the news and views letter that goes with the utility bill. And that's how I've just recently got, there's three other individuals whom I'm speaking with. After tonight's meeting, this committee of the whole and seeing how this shakes out, then we can move forward with their potential appointments. Okay. So just word of mouth and referring them back to our city's real estate, digital or otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sanica? Alderman Sanica?
Sorry, that's just leftover.
Okay. Well then, it doesn't look like there are any other hands up at this time for questions, comments, or concerns? Anything further? Manager Crumstock, is there anything you need specifically from the council here in, in lieu of the presentation to move forward?
No, just the straw vote that possibly approved the draft ordinance. So then we would schedule it for a future city council meeting.
Okay, so the straw vote for accepting an ordinance put forth by Manager Crumstock after this evening. All those in favor?
Mayor, I'm in favor, but I can't find my hand sign again.
Okay, so I have Alderman Diastis, O'Brien, Sanica, Bussesi, Michael, Veniziano, Budmets. That's a seven out of seven unanimity. So we are good to go with that. Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Anything further before we move on to line item five, the animal contractor recommendation?
No, we'll put his and her and we're back to animals.
All right. Thank you for that. And for this, let's go ahead and defer to Chief Nowacki when you're ready.
I am ready, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. City Council, can you hear me okay?
Yep, thank you.
All righty. I promise to make this fairly brief. I know it's been a long night. Because I've spoken to the council several times in the past regarding animal issues. So this is somewhat of a continuation of those previous presentations. For members that are unaware, the police department does respond to about 200 calls a year regarding animal issues. Many of these calls do involve wild animals, non-domesticated critters, you know, skunks, raccoons. Of course, the police department will always address wild animal calls if they pose an immediate danger or risk to the public, such as sick, injured, aggressive animals. We definitely will respond to that. However, a large percentage of animal calls we do go to, they don't fall into this danger to the public category. They would be classified more as a nuisance to the homeowners such as, you know, skunks living in their shed, raccoons in the attic and so forth. So not really a danger to the public, but obviously a nuisance to the homeowner. And that would fall under the responsibility in those situations to the homeowner. So animal removal can be expensive for these homeowners. And they do look at us for referrals and information on, you know, where they could get some help on getting these animals out of the residence or off their property. And then some do elect not to address these situations just due to the cost. It could be very expensive. So I'm before you to obtain basically council approval or permission to locate and identify a preferred vendor for residents regarding wildlife or animal nuisance removal. The preferred vendor selection will be determined by a business that can provide professional animal removal service at a lower rate or thus providing like preferred pricing for rolling metals residents. Proposing this in hopes of saving homeowners money, basically securing a discount rate for residents. And if a preferred vendor is allowed to be identified, it is still the homeowner will always have the ability to choose whatever company they want. It would basically just be a referral and like I said, they elect not to use that company or go with a different company. They would obviously have the right to do that. This would just be an option for them, just to help them if the need arises. So as I said, I tried to make this fairly brief and quick, but at this point, I guess I'm just asking for approval or permission to do a request for proposal to identify a preferred pricing for animal removal for residents of the city. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. I see Manager Crumstock has his hand up, so we'll start with Manager Crumstock and then open it up to the council.
I just want to clarify for all those who don't have the right up in front of you. This is really for, mainly for skunks, raccoons, opossums. It does not deal with foxes or coyotes, those larger critters. So again, right now, if someone calls, we'll give out three recommendations of animal folks who deal with the service for those smaller animals, skunks, raccoons, opossums. So right now, if this passes that the city council allows this and other municipalities do this, we would utilize one vendor because that would be the preferred, when a person says, hey, I have this skunk under your thing or you just purchased some property and under the shed, it's got the skunks and the other critters down there. But again, I do want to stress, this is only for those main skunks, raccoons, opossums, not for foxes or coyotes. That's a different discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Manager Crumstock. Apex predators excluded for this time. Any questions, comments, or concerns before we take the straw vote? We have Alderman Diastis.
I think it's a great idea. I have a lot of people, residents in this ward because we live on a creek asking me about skunks and raccoons all the time. So I think it's a great idea and I would fully support it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Then if not, all those in favor of allowing Chief to go out to create an RFP to get a single vendor that can be a preferred vendor for residents here? With that, we have Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sanica, Alderman Michael, Alderman Budmets, Bussesi, Veniziano.
I'm in too.
And Alderman Diastis, we got the seven. So it's unanimous. Chief, you have approval here from straw vote to seek that RFP.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That brings us to the last and final item tonight, the economic development for 2021. The recap and looking ahead. With this, I think it's time to open the floor up to Martha Coroner. Is that correct? Our business advocate, Martha Coroner?
I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. I just want to briefly recap the write-up that you received in your meeting packet for tonight. During 2020, 37 new businesses opened in the city. Of those, 29 were non-home occupations. And the vast majority of new business openings were in wards two and six, where there is the predominance of commercial properties. Openings during 2020 included large and small businesses alike, as well as nationals and independents. Burrito Perea Mexicana opened at 2101 Plum Grove Road, the former Nix Organic. DeCarlo Construction took over a dilapidated property at 4,000 Industrial Drive. And with the benefit of a Cook County Class 60 incentive, greatly upgraded the site. the benefit of the Cook County Classics, the incentive, greatly upgraded the site. K BBQ opened at 1973 Plum Grove Road and Squire Court Shopping Center. Knockout Print, a small woman-owned business at 4007 Algonquin Road, opened next to Stadium Club Pizza. It's, it's rather fun in that they do prints on apparel with graphics and logos, but they also host ladies' night out parties for design parties, book clubs, things like that, and kids' birthday parties in this retail space. SCA Limited, which is a forensic engineering firm, opened in the School of Health Building at 5600 Apollo Drive. Tacos Juarez, a first-time family-owned Mexican restaurant, opened at 1401 Golf Road, the former Gabudo Burger. Tropical Smoothie Cafe opened next to Panda Express at 1456 Golf Road. Other projects included a $15 million renovation at Continental Towers of their interior common areas, as well as a greenscaping of the outdoor plaza with fire pits, relaxation areas, et cetera. Nature's Care Recreational Cannabis commenced during 2020 at the former medicinal marijuana cannabis distribution facility. It's now recreational and medicinal. Looking forward in 2021, we already have two business openings. Teriyaki Madness opened next to Panera Bread at 1319 Golf Road, and just this last weekend, Rosati's Pizza opened at 2630 Kirchhoff Road, and that is the carryout-only resident business. During 2020, a few businesses did close, unfortunately mostly due to COVID-19. We regret to see the closures of Bueno Beef, Allstate on Kirchhoff Road, Currency Exchange on Kirchhoff Road, Sabrosa Restaurant, Asian Tokyo, and others. We're working hard with the property owners to backfill those now vacant locations. During 2020, there was a temporary local business assistance program to benefit businesses affected during the COVID-19 economic impact. One business did fully comply with the established eligibility requirements and received a $2,000 cash payout. And in January 12th, city council approved a 2021 round of temporary local business assistance. Following the October 2017 business survey, we work hard to implement recommendations from that. Among them, the Economic Development Committee continues new business outreach and communications with businesses. We have established a dining guide on the city website and a hard copy pamphlet. We continue to work with business owners on prospective Cook County Classics, the property tax incentives. Video gaming has been approved. Disposition, the business advocate that I currently hold, is in its fourth year of operation. Restaurants and outdoor seating have become more streamlined as part of a 2020 update to the zoning code, and the city of Rolling Meadows zoning code was updated in 2020 comprehensively, which includes streamlined components to benefit the development and the business community. The Community Events Foundation continues to enhance the program and marketing of community events, and the Community Development Department continues to maintain efforts to improve staffing and procedural items. During 2020, partly in reaction to COVID pandemic, the city managed, established and managed the Business Buzz website, which is open free of charge to all Rolling Meadows businesses to advertise, to offer special offers and coupons, employment opportunities. It includes a monthly business spotlight article, business accolades, and community event announcements. We encourage anybody to visit the website at rmbusinessbuzz.org. There are currently 30 coupons offered by local businesses across all industry groups. Approximately 48 businesses in general have endeavored to advertise their businesses on the website. In 2020, the Business Messenger completed its third year of quarterly publications designed for the Rolling Meadows business communities and strategic business partners. This is mailed to all businesses in the city of Rolling Meadows, as well as those business partners. Unfortunately, again, due to COVID, the Business Community Showcase was to have been in its third year. At the Meridian Banquet and Conference Center, it was canceled. The tentative date for the next showcase event, if COVID restrictions are lifted, will be September 23rd, again at Meridian Banquets and Conference Center. You see in your packets, the Next Level Northwest is gaining traction. There's an impact report in the packet, which is essentially the annual report, as well as a success story for our first Rolling Meadows businesses, business to get through the program. Min Bowler Lakeshore Title, partly attributable to Next Level Northwest, has hired five new employees and seen her revenues increase 120% year over year prior. This consortium is a public-private partnership of Elk Grove Village, Hanover Park, Hoffman Estates, Schaumburg, and Rolling Meadows, with two private sector board members, including Wind Trust Bank and Comcast. We look forward to a successful year in 2021, and we have received an application from the second business to participate in the program. The Community Events Foundation eagerly awaits the opportunity to contribute to more events in 2021. Unfortunately, the first two events, Taste the Town and St. Pat's Day Dinner, have been canceled, but we look forward to outdoor events commencing Memorial Day weekend with the parade and ceremony, as well as the first city market. Thanks to city manager, assistant to the city manager Lori Sezak for managing the event. Staff continues to support the Economic Development Committee and its strategic efforts. The Economic Development Committee does review Cook County Classics, the incentive requests, and when they commence meeting again in 2021, they will continue to discuss 2021 EDC goals and objectives. In the interest of time, I'll leave it at that unless anybody has any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Martha. Any questions, comments, or concerns about the economic development from last year and then looking ahead toward next year? Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So being that I'm on the EDC committee, we have had some turnover the last couple months, and so not really sure how that's going to look when we do reconvene in, I believe, March, hopefully. You know, with that being said, I know that we, we've kind of run into some roadblocks amongst our committee, and so I'm really hoping that EDC committee can really do what the committee is meant to do in, in work with staff and, and getting some of our goals established and, and worked on this coming year because I think the role of the EDC is imperative to the plan of our business community and moving forward in, in this trying time. You know, so I'm really asking that staff really works with the EDC and our business partners that are on this committee so that there's a good partnership amongst this committee and our staff members for a more cohesive working relationship. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that. Yep, and like I said before, I think there is an opportunity to discuss the current committees and commissions and their functionality as we move forward now that Manager Crumstock has finished up the phase one exercise of, of shedding those committees and commissions that are either defunct or irrelevant at this time, and then we can focus on making sure that there is some, some symbiosis between the volunteers and the staff in order to achieve a common goal on initiatives that will really move the economic needle for our community, especially for this, the sake of the Economic Development Committee at that time. So we will have a conversation about that and the members. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, then I want to thank you again for providing that economic development recap and looking ahead, and then I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka for the first and Alderman second for the Budmat, or Alderman Budmats for the second, it's a late night. With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
My pleasure. Veniziano?
Yes.
Bussessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yep.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and an opposed, we're all going home. Have a wonderful evening and we'll talk to you next week on Tuesday.